Good morning. We'll call the Pennington County Commission meeting for June 21, 2016, to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection, pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Farby.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Dan Richard. I'd like to see you remove item 11C. You, I think you should acknowledge, formally acknowledge, the vote by the taxpayers and rescind the wheel tax. It has not been formally rescinded as of now. And I checked back on all the minutes. It's not there. And then the, I'd like to see item 20. And this is official request by West Dakota, remove item 21F until West Dakota and the Water Resource Manager or Supervisor have a chance to discuss their, your advisory group.
So, 21, I'm sorry, 21F is what you want? Because you said 20-something and then 21. Okay.
Yeah, item 21F.
Okay.
Any other requests?
And, Mr. Chair, I don't know who brought item number 17. And if your packets are the same as my packet, I don't believe it's, whoever brought this item didn't bring it properly. We passed a policy that virtually requires an act of Congress to get on the agenda. So I don't see any of those provisions in my packet at least. So item 17 should be removed. Thank you.
I believe in the case of item 17, it is properly included in the agenda. And in order to formally dispose of it, I would accept a motion relative to its removal.
I don't know that that's part of our policy, but if that's what it is, then I move that item 17 be removed because it's not in accordance with the policy we passed about a year ago. Thank you.
Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question about the removal of 21F. Is the West Dakota Water Board still a member of that advisory group? I don't know that.
No, West Dakota was removed from the Water Board and replaced with RCAC. However, if you read the state statutes, the Water Board should be included in all water matters that pertain to the district.
Do you, Mr. Richard, do you think that removal of the RCND and the RCAC and changing the U.S. Forest Service representative is detrimental to water management?
Well, as you recall, RCND were brought on as advisors because RCAC and RESPEC dropped out. And I don't know what's going on there. And RCAC doesn't even exist in the state anymore.
Probably.
But I just, I am not asking to reject it. I'm asking just to hold off until West Dakota has a chance to talk to the-
So do you think West Dakota would be seeking to retain those?
I don't know. I was just asked to come up here, and I am.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Who asked you to come up here?
The Executive Committee.
The Executive Committee?
That's the Chairman, Vice Chairman.
And there's a vote for you to come up and do that?
Yeah, there was a consensus.
Well, no, generally, we require a vote.
Really?
Yeah. When you're representing a group-
Well, you don't, you don't require a vote in this. You just require a consensus.
Yeah, it's ordinary for you to have a vote if you're representing a group.
Well, I think the Chairman has went to that meeting several times, and he can attest that they don't, they don't vote.
They don't vote?
They do not vote, no.
Interesting.
Okay, we have a somewhat of a dilemma here. Jay, do you have any advice for us relative to this kind of removal of items from the agenda?
Well, I think if the Board, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office, if the Board votes by a majority to remove an item from the agenda or to continue it to another day, you can certainly do that under Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
So in each case, the request could be addressed by the Board?
Yes.
As to whether or not that request is responded to?
If the request is to remove it, yes, the Board could take action to, you could call for a motion to remove it. And if it fails for lack of a second, it stays on. If the Board moves to approve its removal entirely or continue to another date, that would be the action you could take. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Okay, so in this case, I would ask for a motion relative to item 11C. Do you wish to remove it from the agenda or do you wish to retain it?
Mr. Chair, based upon, and I know this discussion shouldn't happen ahead of time, but this is abnormal circumstance, I believe that Mr. Richard is correct that the ordinance that was passed about this time last year is still in the books, enacting a wheel tax for Pennington County.
The question is, do you or do you not wish to retain item 11C on the agenda?
Based on the background I just gave you, that item should not be on the agenda. Therefore, I move that it be removed.
We have a motion to remove item 11C from the agenda. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on to item 21F. Do you wish it to remain on the agenda or remove it?
I move for removal, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to remove item 21F. Is there any discussion? Excuse me, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to any other items on the agenda that you wish removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, those items, especially 11C and 17 are not properly before us. Let me repeat, repeat. As far as I know, Mr. Richard's correct, the ordinance, the ordinance this county enacted-
Mr. Chair?
I have the floor, Mr. Chair. The ordinance that this county enacted is still on the books.
Pressing the motion.
It's still on the books. Just because we had a vote, the people voted it out, we, we, the governing body of this county, still have an obligation to amend that ordinance out of existence. Until it's amended out of existence, then why do we have this resolution in front of us? Those two are tied together. As far as item 17 is concerned, nobody even had the audacity or the courage to put their name on the item, much less follow the policy that this county adopted for bringing items forward with all the background information, et cetera, et cetera. That policy almost requires an act of Congress to get something on the agenda, but here it appears. So either we have, we're consistent in our rules, or do we have chaos? Thank you.
Anything further? If not, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is always a pleasure, introduction of new employees.
Thank you. Nick Stroud, HR Director for Pennington County. We are excited this morning. We have a lot of new hires, and this is an exciting time for them. And so I want them to come up and introduce themselves. We have Leslie Jansen from the Dispatch Center. She's going to come up and introduce her new employees. And then we have some from Highway and Equalization. And then Kevin Tom, our Sheriff, is going to come up and introduce his folks. So, Leslie?
Did you tell them that they have to keep their speeches to like 10 minutes at the most?
I said five minutes apiece since there's a lot of them.
Commissioners, my name is Leslie Jansen, the Training Manager for Pennington County 911. We have three new hires that started with us on May 23rd. They're almost done with classes last week. I'll have them stand up. We have Devon Kenzer, Carla Buxton, and Jared Schiffler.
Welcome.
All right. And then we have some representatives from the Equalization Department.
Hi, my name's Scott Dressler. I'm in Appraiser One.
Hi, I'm Lori Joya, and I'm in Appraiser One for the Equalization Department.
And then we have one gentleman from the New Underwood Highway Department.
I am Jeff Hoffman. I'm glad to be part of the company in Pennington County.
Thank you.
Morning, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. We have a slew of new employees this morning. We try and do our hirings quarterly, so we kind of stockpile them and bring them to you quarterly. And then some of these are the new positions you approved out at JSE. Some of them are backfills for people that have retired or left. So with that, let them come up and tell you their name and what division they're working in or what they're doing and anything else they want to tell you about themselves.
Brock Sinclair, and I'm Correctional Officer for the jail.
I'm Lucas Weller, and I will be working at City County Alcohol and Drug as a detox technician.
Morning, Michelle Fankhaus, or I'm going to be a building tech at the Pennington County Jail.
Heather Diamond, detox tech.
I'm Jerry Shear. I'll be doing maintenance at JSE.
Morning, Commissioners, I'm Sean Stoltz. I'll be a transport officer.
Good morning, my name is Christina Ranzigans. I'll be a nurse at the jail.
Morning, DeeDee Dillon, Case Manager, Juvenile Services Center.
Jessica Rose, and I'm a correctional officer at the jail.
Hi, my name is Carrie Smith, and I'll be a correctional officer.
Good morning, my name's Jordan Nelson, and I'll be at LPN at the JSE.
Morning, I'm Gerald Adam Omen. I'll be at City County Detox.
Good morning, I'm Ryan Hirsch, and I'll be a correctional officer.
Good morning, my name's Nikki Orr. I'll be a booking tech at the jail.
Morning, I'm Paul Quinn. I'll be a corrections officer at the JSE.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Jacob Fredericksen. I'll be a correctional officer at the jail.
Good morning, my name is Jason Sevong. I'll be a correctional officer at JSE.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Michael Haydema, and I'll be a correctional officer at JSE.
Thank you, and welcome. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar as written.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, sorry, Holly, I forgot you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Holly Hinni is your office manager. Greetings. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversially and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the Minutes from the Regular Meeting of June 10, 2016. Number seven is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle by the West River Pink Ladies Dart League. Number eight is approval to adopt a highway application for a portion of Neck Yoke Road by the 89th Attack Squadron, Ellsworth Air Force Base. And number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of May 2016 as submitted by Human Resources.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed? If not, do we have a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Holly. Next item is item 10. Peshawat update, the dynamic duo. Sorry. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. We're glad to be here to say hello. Mark Van Norman.
Kurt Blue Dog.
And we're here on behalf of Rosebud, Shakopee, Crow Creek, and Standing Rock. We had a pretty good meeting yesterday among the tribes, and we talked to USDA and the Forest Service and the BIA and Steve Emery from State Tribal Relations from the Governor's Staff. So things are, things are going fairly good. We've had some challenges with, with our buffalo, but we've got a contract out for $250,000 in fencing, and that should be done in the next two or three months. We're putting up electric wire close to the area where the buffalo are now.
Where they roam.
They roam. They seem to like Sundance, Wyoming for some reason. And we've had some calves, so we're going to keep the calves and the yearlings up there and the cows long enough to wean the calves. But we're trading out some of the older calves from the National Park for some younger animals that'll maybe get more acclimated to the area. We've had a lot of help and cooperation from the neighbors, so we appreciate that. And things are generally going well. I know you're apprised that the BIA made a decision to take the land in trust on about March 10, I think. And then the state appealed that on April 1. And that appeal goes to the Assistant Secretary for Indian Affairs in the Department of Interior, and they set forth a briefing schedule. And the state's brief was filed on June 10. And our brief will be filed on July 11. And they get to reply on July 26. So we would think that maybe 90 days thereafter, there might be a decision. So maybe in October, we're looking for a decision on that. And then if the decision's favorable, then they'd go ahead and take the land in trust. So we're hopeful about that. We, we talked to Steve Emery. We're going to go back around and talk to the Governor again. We felt like we had met the concerns that the Governor raised, and the Governor told us that, no, we hadn't. So we want to go back around and round out the loop and, and provide them documentation that, you know, of the progress that we've made. So generally, things are going well, and we appreciate your, your willingness to work with us. And we want to work with you if any issues come up and, and just, you know, work them out right away. We have Joe Cologne from the Rosebud Sioux Tribe up there full-time. And we've got tractors and four, two-wheelers and four-wheelers and pickups and trailers. And Joe wants more equipment, so we're working on more equipment. But it's, it's building out nicely. And we were up there yesterday, and it's just green and beautiful, and, and people really appreciate the tranquility of the site. So thank you for, for everything.
Thank you. Commissioners, I don't really, Mark covered that pretty thoroughly. Don't have much to add. We are going through with the appeal, and my office will be representing the tribes. And it's really an appeal, the appeal is really directed at the Interior Department under a federal law called the Administrative Procedures Act, where they can challenge. And they have, under the federal law, they have a heavier burden to prove that it was arbitrary and capricious. So we're hopeful that, that we'll get a decision in our favor. But I just wanted to point out, I think we've been really straight back and forth. We've done our best to keep the Commissioners and staff filled in on what we're doing, and that's exactly the route we've been following. And we appreciate the cooperation from all the way down, from the Commissioners down to the staff folks. Yesterday, we had, well, a meeting here in town and then a ceremony up at Peshawat, where we had a lot of tribal participation. There was a youth camp there, and that was nice. A lot of young Indian kids from some of the tribal schools were there for a two- or three-day camp at Peshawat, just learning a lot of things about the outdoors and the bison and the historical significance and the religious significance of the site. So that was really nice to see, not only the tribal participants, but also the students being there to learn and really enjoy it. It was, it was a really good time, I think, enjoyable time. But we want to keep you updated. I mean, we want to, as Mark says, maintain what I think and hope and think is a good working relationship with the county and all of your staff folks here. So we want to, as much as possible, I think, you know, keep you filled in. And if you have any issues with us, just let us know, and we'll do our best to, you know, to work through them. And we know we've got some work to do with the Governor yet, but we're going to continue to do that. And hopefully, hopefully, I think that his letter showed that he had some misinformation, I think. So we're going to try to get him some documents that will help with our position with him. So anyway, again, thanks for all of your cooperation. That's all of our comments. Maybe you have any-
We should probably mention one more thing. You know, we did get contact by the Federal Highway Administration and the state highway folks about Rochford Road, and they have their NEPA process that they're going through. And I guess they decided that they're not going to pave it per se, but they're going to look at a chip seal thing. And then they stick with the existing right-of-way so that they have less environmental impact. So we, we provided comments, and our comments were only that, you know, if the land goes into trust, that the Tribal Historic Preservation Office from Rosebud would, would coordinate with the Shippo and, and the other Tippos in regard to any cultural properties. But it looked like the plan was to try and avoid the tribal cultural properties as much as possible. And then our other comment was, we requested they put in signs about, you know, buffalo up here. So we'll see, maybe they'll do that for us. So, so thanks very much for giving us a chance to come in. And we'll come back in, we're going to have another quarterly meeting in September, and we'll work it out with Holly, just to come in and say hello and give you an update.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioners.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I do have, for Mr. Van Norman and Mr. Blue Dog, have you guys had any further discussion with the various tribes to deed that road to Pennington County? I'm sorry, George, what was that? Have you had any further discussion of deeding that road to Pennington County? Deeding the road, the Rochford Road? I don't- The portion that goes through Peshawat. Oh, I don't think there's been any discussion on that.
Yeah. The way I understand it is, and we worked with Jay Alderman a little bit on this, we have our right-of-way agreement, and the right-of-way agreement is based on the existing right-of-way. And the existing right-of-way is a right for free passage of vehicles up there. And that's normally the way that a road would be handled in Indian country. So like if you think of Highway 212 across the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, for example, that's, that's a right-of-way. And it's not, it's not deeded per se because it's used for the road, and the right-of-way is there for the purpose of the road. So, so we're thinking that the existing situation with the county right-of-way is appropriate for the purposes of that road. And as part of our right-of-way agreement, we agreed that, you know, we recognize, you know, everybody's free passage, and also that, you know, we have free passage to that road and access to the road, and that we cooperate with you on any issues that arise. And if there were ever any kind of special event that would, that we would request closure of the road, we would go through your process. But we don't anticipate any, any such event or request for closure.
Mr. Chair, I don't know how the other Commissioners feel, but I'm very, very adamant about the notion that, that road should be deeded to Pennington County. Thank you.
Okay. Well, just to let you know, I mean, these other roads throughout the state, like Highway 83, they're not deeded. There, there are all this right-of-way situations. So I think you're, I think you're on pretty solid ground, and I think if you talk to your attorney, Jay Alderman, he'll, he'll confirm that. So thanks very much.
Thank you. I can enjoy your stay here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is item 11, items from the Auditor.
Morning, Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. Have before you a Bonding Reissue Resolution. As indicated in the memo, our Bond Counsel and underwriters continually monitor all of our existing bond issues and tell us basically when it is financially feasible or beneficial for the county to reissue, refund, rewrite the existing bond issue. That has come to pass on the 2011A jail refinance bonds. We've already refinanced that set of original bonds once. And the refunded amount is $5,530,000. And the projections say that through the maturity date of 2023, the county, after cost of issuance, will cost us, or will save us approximately $176,000. The resolution is attached. It's a basic resolution that we pass on all our refunding issues. It's been reviewed by our Bond Counsel, which is what we hire her for. And I present it to the Board for approval, which publications will occur on July 6 and 7, and will become effective 20 days after that, which is when the bonds will be reissued.
I'll move approval of the 2016B Bonding Reissue Resolution. And authorize signatures.
Is there a second?
And authorize signatures.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion.
Now, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, I, I mean, you know, we, if we're gonna, the projections are to save a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Of course, that's a projection, you know, it's, it's kind of like asking a lawyer if you should sue somebody, or a di- a surgeon if you should have surgery. Of course, you're gonna say yes. We're asking the bond company who is gonna sell these and make money, shall we redo these? And of course, you're gonna say yes, but you can't hardly turn down a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars either. If, that's the projection.
Any further comment?
I have a comment about, uh, we're up to Sixth Supplemental Trust and Sixth Amendment to the lease. Before this is over, it'll be twenty, thirty? How many supplemental trusts and amendments will there be before it's all said and done?
We have to...
You don't have to answer.
That I didn't have to answer.
You didn't have to answer, no.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second? No further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Matt, do you want the budget up on the screens?
Yes, yes, please.
I guess. It's stinking.
It's a lot to pull up.
The Summary Means of Finance is the document that is up on the screen for you. It is summarized in the memo provided to you. The department heads have submitted their budgets for expenses and revenues per the Commissioner's direction. The Means of Finance totals that information by fund, and the total provisional budget for two thousand seventeen at this time is eighty-nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand, supported by miscellaneous revenues, which is everything other than current year property taxes at forty-two or almost forty-three million, tax revenues at forty-three point six million, cash reserves applied, six point one million, and five percent uncollected taxes at three point five million. Cash reserves for cash flows are the goal at the end of two thousand seventeen, or, excuse me, at twenty sixteen, at nineteen point one eight, uh, back up to the twenty percent by the end of two thousand seventeen. Cash analysis report here projects, um, the budgets for all the levied funds as well as non-levied funds through, um, the end of two thousand seventeen, which is what we've done in the past. The Budget Summary Report here shows, uh, which has been re-formatted, it has, um, it had to be separated out by fund so that we could show tax burden, percent of tax burden, and then we also added columns for employees physically paid on the four fifteen census versus benefited and non-benefited, and per the Board's direction, any new FTE that's requested is shown in a separate column with the amount of salaries and matchings for that position or positions directly underneath that, so that the Board can see what that would be costing us. Related department revenues, um, are now included as part of that, um, and it is separated by fund, um, so that we could, uh, equate the proper, uh, revenue sources and actually do some cross-balancing. Um, I don't know if the Board would want me to go into anything else at this time, or why eleven C is on the agenda, they're kind of intertwined, but I wanted it shown, shown separately on the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Julie, did I read correctly that, um, given this eighty-nine million, two hundred and fifty thousand, that our mill levy overall would go down?
If, if you look here, it would go from four point eight two two to four point eight nine eight, which is a one point five eight percent increase. And of course, the road and bridge fund, which is now, would, in this synopsis, uh, to replace the two million, would, of course, go up.
Mm-hmm. That's what I'm trying to get a handle on.
The county fire fund, which everybody would pay the county road and bridge fund, but, uh, I haven't gotten the direction from the Department of Revenue, whether it's now or would be under county consolidated, so I showed it separately. Um, your fire fund would stay the same, library plus opt-out would actually go down a little bit, and unorganized road would go up slightly. Here's the taxes on your different, on a thousand dollar val- hundred thousand dollar value, and the only reason we use that as an, as an example is because it's easily multiplied. Um, I haven't checked the average home value. Um, it used to be about two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, but I haven't, I haven't checked that. And then, of course, here is your value changes, um, because different areas pay into the different special funds, county li- fire, library, unorganized road. That's why those values have a different in, increase in them than county consolidated, which is where the road and bridge, uh, funds would be levied against. If I may go into the reason I submitted that for the Board at this time, it's part of the provisional budget. Um, I had it, again, I had it shown as a separate item for, uh, public notification. This is the new tax that was allowed under the, was it SB one, a couple of years ago? It is not a wheel tax, uh, so we're not in violation of bringing that back to the people within a year. It is like an opt-out. That, uh, resolution that is presented for you has been, um, originally submitted by the Department of Revenue for us. It's been fine-tuned by, uh, our State's Attorney's Office and myself to properly, uh, fit it into Pennington County, but basically, it is an additional tax. It is the, um, replacement of the two million that we removed from the road and bridge operating transfer, because we had anticipated the wheel, possibility of a wheel tax. Um, this is the only way it could have been presented to the Board for your decision, not mine or Tom's, whether you levy for it or replace it, how. This is the step that you need to go through. I will tell you that, um, the difference in amounts are because of this levy. It's like the old highway and bridge reserve levy, which has gone away. Twenty-five percent of what you collect within municipal boundaries has to be submitted back to that municipality. That's why if, if Tom submitted two million, we estimated it at two point five million for the resolution. Once it is approved, then it would continue to grow. How it's different than a normal opt-out, like we have for the library, that hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred dollars will stay there and, and maintain that level forever, whereas the law is different on this. It will grow each year, like the rest of our tax base, by CPI and, um, growth. Um, I'm just not sure exactly how that will equate, and we'll get, once we get final values, we would know exactly how much of the actual twenty-five percent would go back. This is a, a summary, starting from that, to make sure that we were well-protected, since we didn't have it. Um, it's not a flat fee of twenty-five percent that goes to municipalities. It would be submitted to the municipalities monthly, along with their tax collections. So as tax collections are made, it would go to them, so it's not a budgeted item. Um, so it wouldn't, it does not reflect in the two thousand seventeen, and we've, it's not prop- it's not shown quite correctly on this Means of Finance, because I had to learn how to deal with it, and I'm, I, I, I've got a call in Department of Legislative Audit, as well as, um, Department of Revenue to, to show the amount that we're levying extra for the twenty-five percent, so that we can show that out, so it'll, it'll balance. So the, the final one, if this passes, it will look a little bit different. Be, it'll show road and bridge, how much it expects to, to receive, and then it'll have a line underneath it that'll say less than twenty-five percent. And the reason for that is so Julie doesn't forget to levy for it. Otherwise, um, it would be short. That is why this resolution is before the Board. It's not to supersede the wheel tax, that cannot be brought back to the people for at least twelve months. This is the new way to raise money and levy. Everybody in the county pays it, so it's just like the wheel tax in that aspect. It would be part of the tax, just like county general accumulated building and county fairgrounds, that everybody would pay it, which is why twenty-five percent additional has to be levied to go back to the cities. It is totally the Board's decision, but this, when, when I talked to Tom about what we should do with this, I said, I think for full discussion by the Board, it's your decision, not ours, how we replace that two million, if we replace the two million, this is the only way we could bring it forward to the Board, um, for full discussion. This resolution is like an original opt-out resolution. It has to be approved for the next taxation year by July fifteenth. So listing it separate gives you this meeting, as well as the first meeting in July, unless you wanna hold a special, to have it approved by then. And, and, and again, the reason it's being presented is to give the, the Commissioners the right to have the full public discussion, go through your budget hearings, and, and, um, still approve a provisional budget. That's the way the majority of the Board sees it. So that's kind of why they're presented, but it is why it was listed separately, to give full disclosure to the public. It's not like we're trying to hide anything from the public. So also, um, the detailed revenues are attached, and, um, the, uh, budget is kind of a work in progress as you go through, and when departments submit their original budget requests, as well as their revenue estimates, to me, there's a lot of fine-tuning going along. So, um, Holly and I have trouble balancing my revenue summary to what the department's actually submitted, and so if there's any difference between the two, I make changes, um, that they're not known, that they don't know about until I send them the document to be approved. We also have to balance non-levied funds, so that we're not levying any money, so there's changes in revenues, but regardless what they give you, the one you have in front of you, my master is God, basically. So don't climb on them if they're not exactly quite the same, because it's, it's, it's a work in progress, and, um, if there are any questions, the cash analysis is, is, um, as you are aware, um, let me pull that up, I wanna show you. The big change that we made to cash analysis, whoops, is the amount of supplements that we were doing all at the end of the year, which was by the time everybody had spent the money, did not give you, as a Board, or me, the, the information to project our reserves, and we took over two and a half million out of reserves last year, that we had to, um, build back up, which is why we took the step of building back to nineteen percent by the end of two thousand sixteen, back to our twenty percent. And you can see, we're only sixty-five hundred dollars off, and I could've made it really pretty and added three more decimals, but decided not to do that. But if you look at both the assumptions, these are the assumptions that we make to the, uh, state rule of, we spend every dime, we only, we collect exactly what we estimate, which is never true. And what the assumptions are here, that the change that we've made is this line thirty-three, is I'm assuming now for the projections, that you will do from cash reserves one point four million dollars in supplements. I've already built that into the nineteen percent. So when you ask, does this reserve, does this supplement affect cash reserves? It does if it's not being supported by an underestimated or an, a new revenue. It does affect reserves, but we've taken into that, that into account now in our assumptions, and we also have one point five million, oh, nope, only a half a million, um, into budget two thousand seventeen, because we think we're gonna, our revenues are a little bit higher, we're, we're looking at them a little bit more aggressively, and we have increased our contingency fund in this, which, which you will notice, so that we will be using that, and that is basically where we're taking those first supplements from, rather than having it so low, because we weren't using it, because we were taking them all from cash reserves. So that kind of summarizes that, and, and, um, makes those adjustments. Uh, this, as all assumptions, adjustments are, they could be way off, but I've not been too far off, especially now when we're dealing with supplements as they are needed. The Board's informed, we figure out if we're gonna spend the money before the department head actually spends it. It's against your philosophy, but it sure makes analyzing your cash and, and verifying what that is going to be, instead of just giving them all to you at the end of the year, which is nice, it's in a nice little package, but you, you can't make any, any decisions, because frankly, the money's already spent. So it was a good change, I think, and so that's the biggest difference in your cash analysis, which, you know, is based off of, again, history, you can see the history, um, for the last two or three years. Um, the rest of the charts, don't look at them, because they're not done yet. They're, it's all pretty much tied together, but,
Mr. Chairman.
If anybody has any questions, um...
Do. The final provisional budget total of eighty-nine million plus, and the revenues do not, neither one include the two point five million dollars.
Yes, they both do.
They both do.
It includes the two million budget request in road and bridge fund, and it includes the two point five million in, um, the road and bridge. So depending upon how, if, if you look at road and bridge online, on the Means of Finance, the eleven point nine million does include the two million request, as does the two point six five. And once I got to that point, it's not quite the two point five, I have to back it up a little bit, but,
Okay.
Um, so yes, it does, which is, again, why you submit, why I submitted the resolution.
All right.
Because if I wouldn't have, we would, Tom and I would've made the decision for the Board, and this way, the Board has that decision, you get to work through your budget hearings, and as a Board, you can decide if that's the levy that you wanna put on. It is referable, just like an opt-out, and we all know what that costs, it's gonna be about fifty... It's going to be about $50,000 if it's referred. So, um, that's what it is to the Board. And I've asked Holly to, um, put this on the next meeting also so that again, it's properly notified unless you just vote for it or against it today, then that would, that would deal with it. But I think it deserves its own place on the agenda and, um, I believe, I don't know if we'll have another budget discussion on, other than that item, if you wish, on the 5th of July because I understand you still have a few budget hearings. Um, I can certainly make any changes up to that point and redeliver it because you'll have all of them but a, a, a couple. If, if you want, I can do that or we'll need to make some approval of a provisional budget on that second meeting of July, but again, you can still change it. The Road and Bridge levy has to be decided either today or at your sec, first meeting in July, definitely by the 15th. Just, that's the rules of, of that. So if there's any other questions, if you want to, after your budget hearings or at my budget hearing, tell me if you want changes made to date for that July 5th, July 5th meeting, I was looking for Holly, sorry, the next, the first meeting in July. So if I, hope I've explained it good enough for you and budget hearing schedule has gone out. Um, I don't have that with me, but you know what they are anyway. They're in the next few days. Any other questions on the budget or the resolution?
Just, just to be clear, um, the action on the resolution...
Yes.
...can be done at the next meeting?
Yes.
And so if, I, I would ask the Commission, do you wish to take action today or do you wish to, uh, deliberate on it and do it later?
Are we on C now?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to, uh, uh, I guess table the resolution. Uh, I'd like to vote, I'd like to say, just to throw it out totally, but, uh, table it until we do some more budget work and see what's, what's going to happen, but I guess that's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table item C until later. Any discussion on the motion?
Just so, just so I'm clear, this is the motion to table or to, to postpone until?
Table.
Yeah. And table means...
I believe the correct motion should be, if you want to vote at a subsequent time, is to, to delay it or postpone it to a...
Yeah, but that's not what I'm saying, George. I know what the proper motion is. I want to table it and it will take a motion to get it back off the table and if it doesn't get that, then it just sits there until, uh, I'm gone. Then I don't care what you do.
And I believe my understanding of, of tabling is for this assembly or this session.
Yeah, right.
Is this the 41st day? Is that what you're trying to say, Commissioner Busch?
I think it's just for this day.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, then I'll make it clear, since I didn't get a second. I make a motion not to enter into this resolution and, uh, that's it. I guess that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to not enter into the resolution. Is there...
I seconded.
I understand that.
The tabling had a second.
It did have a second.
Yes, it did, sir.
Okay, then we might have to vote on that.
Let's vote on the table first.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion.
Nancy?
I want to make sure which one I'm discussing. Am I discussing the tabling or am I discussing the second motion?
I didn't think that the tabling had a second, but if it did, I imagine we better get, get rid of that one.
Or can you withdraw it?
Well, I'll withdraw it, sure, if the second will.
Hang in there, Karen. Okay.
I had that Hadcock seconded. Are you withdrawing or going to vote on it?
So what, what are we up to?
Well, I want to withdraw it if I can.
Withdraw which?
The tabling motion.
Who seconded it, Karen?
Deb did.
Deb, you seconded, so you would have to withdraw your second also?
I guess I would like to vote on the table first.
Okay.
How about that?
Okay.
Sure.
So you declined to withdraw your second?
Right.
Where does that put us, Jay?
Right.
Do we vote on it then?
We'll vote on the original motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a tabling motion, the second was not withdrawn. The vote is on the tabling motion and we'll have a roll call.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm not clear what we're voting on.
He just told you.
I had the floor. I'm, I'm not clear, are we, what's the consequences of voting yes or no? I'll just abstain.
Well, I would, my original theory was that I thought a tabling motion would put it on the table until it gets brought up. Our legal counsel says, no, it's just for this session. So it could get back on, I guess, be put on next agenda and that's not what I want.
I thought it had to be brought off the table. So it has to be brought off the table whenever we want, I thought, not next meeting. When I read tabling, that's what it said, it had to be brought back off the table, whether it's six months from now or, or next meeting.
The only time you can consider this legally is at the next Board meeting because it has to be approved by the 15th. So if you table it and bring it back up the third or the second meeting of July, it does nothing because you can't approve it then.
I guess I needed to know that, so...
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so that would make me withdraw my tabling, knowing that if we tabled it, it wouldn't matter anyway. So I apologize. I'm glad you explained that to me, Ms. Julie.
So where are we?
Back to Ron's second motion then.
So I'll withdraw my table motion and so is he.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so now, now we have the second motion.
Which is to deny the resolution.
That's it.
I seconded, yes.
His motion is made and seconded and we'll do a roll call again.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Could I, could I have some discussion on this? Um, I, I think that the Highway Department deserves the right to talk to us about what this would do and our budget hearings would re, would allow that. So I think this is precipitous. We can vote it down next meeting, but to not, it, it's not fiscally responsible for us to just vote it down without carefully considering consequences and hearing what those consequences are.
I agree.
Mr. Chair?
Any further remarks?
Yeah, I have, I do. When we were discussing the wheel tax, I, I mean, the reason I'm, where I'm at today is I made it very clear, I'm not going to vote to raise property taxes if the wheel tax fails. The wheel tax was designed to make the people who use the roads pay for it. Not everybody in the county paid for them. So, um, I, I, at that time, made it clear, I'm sure in my position that if the wheel tax fails, which, you know, there was a good chance of that, and it did, uh, I guess we'll have to do, uh, without the money and Highway will have to reconfigure their, their projects. You know, people, uh, I would not want to be on the side of saying, let's raise property taxes right now. I think that's, um, you know, and that's physically, uh, I think irresponsible of us to do that. And the people that said that, uh, they voted, they don't want to raise taxes to fix roads, okay. I, that's, I agree with George for a change, so...
Any further comments?
Can I put a mark on the wall or...
Absolutely.
And I agree, um, we shouldn't, I don't think we should tax everybody. The people that use roads and, and bridges and the culverts are going to be affected more in the outlining areas in the county and they have to recognize that we are going to be short than in the Highway Department. So snow removal might be different, your culverts might be different, and you need to recognize this as well, George, when you decide or anybody in that outlining area that you can spend 200 and something thousand dollars for seven people, that you can spend 300 and some thousand dollars to put another culvert for two houses in that area, in the outlining areas. So let's think about that when we're spending taxpayer dollars on two to seven people fixing things that I think, again, I would say, make a priority list. It should be about how many people are using that road and how significant for a safe, health, welfare and safety that road is for people. Cause I'm seeing some of this that people are voting on and they didn't want the wheel tax, but they're the first people to take that money from the highway tax or highway, uh, budget to fix their issues. So, um, let's be careful how we're speaking on things sometimes that we don't want any more taxes, but we're sure to spend the taxpayer dollar, um, in a second on our issues for four to seven people and maybe sometimes nine at the most. So, um, again, I'm not in favor of this tax. Uh, I think we need to make it up, but when the snow removal in your area is affected, uh, remember, um, that you were the first one, um, saying we shouldn't have no road and bridge tax to help those outlining areas because most of that taxes would have been paid for by the folks in the municipality, not the county outlining areas. If you looked at the 37,000 people that paid, uh, property taxes at that time or, um, only 12,000 were out in the outlining area. So remember who takes care of, um, this county. It's both city and county folks, not just county. We take care of the rural very well in, in our municipality as well, so...
I just have one more thing, Mr. Chairman, that we pay our Highway Superintendent good money to make priorities and to do the work and, and that's, I guess, what we're going to rely on him to do. I'm not saying what, and I don't think it's up to us to determine what jobs we should do or what jobs we shouldn't do and that's his job.
And I, again, I agree, um, Tom needs to make priorities and we need to stick with those and not be mad when those things aren't done in your area because we have, um, decided this and the people have decided this. People have voted on this. So we have to do what we can do and he has to prioritize and that's the bottom line. And I think he does a great job at that.
We have a motion and a second. Would you repeat the motion, please, Karen?
Moved by Busch, and seconded by Farabee to not enter into the resolution.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, does anybody from the public want to comment? They should be asked if they, if they want to comment.
Well, certainly, come, come forward and we'll listen.
My name's Bruce Meister and, uh, I was up here when, before the wheel tax. And I made a statement that, you know, I, my, my income is, is stationary, pretty much. Mr. Peterson, his income is fairly stationary like mine, he's on Social Security too. And, uh, I don't know, in the past five or six years, we hadn't really gotten any raise, nothing to, nothing to, to make up whatever, you know, the cost of living is, you know, increasing. Uh, and just like last time, every time I turn around, somebody wants money from me for something. You know, whether it be, uh, the government or, or it doesn't matter who, that every time I turn around, they, somebody wants more money. Uh, it, it just not, it, it's not there. And, uh, Commissioner Hadcock, as far as spending money by the, by the County Street Department or County Highways, I called them one day because it was raining and here goes a street sweeper down my street. There was absolutely no reason for that street sweeper to be out there. Now that's a waste of my money and I very much disagree with that. I called the top man at the, you know, the boss at the county, at the road or the Highway Department, he was out of town, so I got talk number two in line, didn't do a damn bit of good. He said that was required. I said, required by who? You know? And I said, you're wasting my money. Now the streets out there in the country, most of them, they don't, they don't collect, well, they collect some dirt occasionally, but it, it goes away. It'll rain and, and/or it gets beat up by other tires, but, you know, it's not something that, uh, when they, when they have a race at the racetrack down there and, and everybody's parked on that mud and dirt and gravel and stuff after the race, Highway 44 is a terrible mess. And I, and I, that, this is one part I, I don't agree with them. They should have to do something with that parking area so that they don't drag out all that, that dirt and mud and everything on the highway. But that, but that's, that's the exception. Otherwise, out in the country, you don't have that big a problem. Uh, I think, uh, this, this tax that, that you're considering here, the, um, I, I, I honestly believe is kind of an end run around the wheel tax and, and I'm against that. And if, if you guys should, I sound like you may vote it down today, I'm not sure. Uh, but if it, if it did, we'll, we'll, we'll refer it to the voters again. Thank you.
And Mr. Bruce Meister, I, I agree with you. It's based on priority and, and some of that priority isn't always what, um, we want it to be or how we think it should be, but, um, hopefully, I think the highways got it down because I always have a lot of really good comments about the highway too, but I have...
Well, I, I have nothing but praise for the, for the Highway Department, really, but, but, you know, I, I see from time to time where they're wasting my money and I said, who's, who's, where's this, where's this idea coming from?
Right, and I appreciate...
Are the culverts working pretty good down there now?
The culverts? Uh, if people keep them clean, they work just fine.
So that, that update you got down there is working then?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Good morning again, Dan Richard. It's been brought up several times that, uh, when you, if we're, if it's going to be voted down, that they're going to have to prioritize, uh, Tom's going to have to reprioritize the projects. However, I am looking at this, uh, at a different angle. Uh, it's your job to prioritize, prioritize the spending within the county. So if you're going to come up short, two and a half million dollars, then you need to start looking at everything within the county so you're not wasting any money anywhere within the county and don't tell me that there's not any waste going on because I was in government too long and I know there's waste someplace. So I think you need to change from just putting the onus on highway to onus on the entire county. Thank you.
Anything further? Now we'll have a roll call vote.
Busch?
Yes.
Farabee?
Yes.
Hadcock?
Yes.
Troutman?
No.
Peterson?
No. Motion carried. Okay, we'll go on to item D.
Yes, item D is a notice to supplement the accumulated building fund capital projects budget in the amount of 410,400 from restricted fund balance. And that is today. And documentation is attached from this money will be used from the, by the Sheriff's Office for the Black Creek Integrated Systems, which the Board approved last year with only funding from, for one year and it was not put into the 2017 budget anywhere.
Any questions for Julie?
Mr. Chair, I'd have a question for the Sheriff, a progress report.
Morning again, Kevin Tone, Penti County Sheriff. And, uh, again, just to recap, this was approved last year by the Commission and then we had 500,000 in overcollected revenues that we supplemented last year and, you know, in changing the process this year, the Auditor preferred... And in changing the process this year, the auditor preferred that we take it out of accumulated building and not out of overcollected revenues. That's why we're back doing this process. In terms of an update, we're looking at a final cutover conversion, if you will, sometime in October of this year.
We're kind of on budget?
Mr. Chairman, yes, we are.
Thanks.
So, Ms. Julie, on the, since we're taking it from overaccumulated...
From accumulated building?
Yes. Then the five-hundred thousand that is overcollected in the sheriff's department comes into general fund, or where does that money go?
He had overcollected revenues last year and spent it on that project already.
Okay.
We didn't move them to accumulated building to have the expense come from accumulated building.
Okay, so...
This year, it's come, the remainder of the upgrade is coming from accumulated building instead of from overcollected revenues that we don't have an estimate at this time yet.
So, if we did have overcollected this year, then we could use it for general fund?
It's still in general fund. The overcollected revenues were not in accumulated building last year. They were in general fund.
Right. And, yeah, I got that point at this point. Thank you.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to supplement the accumulated building fund capital projects budget in the amount of four-hundred-and-ten-thousand-four-hundred from restricted fund balance to pay for the remainder of the Black Creek Integrated Systems for the jail.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Alderman with the state's attorney's office. I believe this is the item with regard to the real estate purchase agreement between Pennington County and the Bowers. I can let the commission know the Bowers have signed the original. And so, what I'm looking for today is a motion to approve, and I think you have the proposed motion in your packet. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve that purchase agreement with the language of the motion you have in the packet.
Yes, we do. Any questions for Jay?
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple. Section four, you say this offer is not subject to the property appraising for at least the purchase price.
The purpose of that is to not spend additional money just to appraise the property. And that's not an uncommon section in purchase agreements.
And then on page four...
Because typically, sorry, typically, you're looking at doing that for like a loan or something, and this is a purchase agreement, which is a different matter.
Section ten, choice of law. The laws of the state of South Dakota shall govern this transaction. Well, I'd kind of hope it wouldn't be Minnesota or North Dakota. Thank you.
It's not. That's why it says South Dakota.
Well, some things are assumed.
Any other comments or questions?
I have one more, Mr. Chair. As I recall, last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Buskrud asked for appraisals on these two properties. I didn't see them in the packet.
I can tell you that the numbers that we started with in our negotiations come from equalization assessments, the 2015 assessments in particular. And for this particular property, that was about a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. And so, what the offer for the purchase, being a hundred-and-ninety thousand, that is approximately a fifteen percent increase over the assessed value. And that's how the negotiations went. So, that's moving from one-sixty-five, is the 2015 assessment, to one-ninety is about a fifteen percent increase.
Anything further? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the real estate purchase agreement between Pennington County and Jerome F. Bauer and Mary V. Bauer in the amount of a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars for the property legally described as, and I'm not going to read that legal description, and to authorize the commission chairman to sign said agreement and the county auditor to issue a check for the purchase price, plus the county's obligation for any additional fees or costs associated with closing, and to further authorize the chairman, auditor, and/or state's attorney to sign any and all additional documents necessary to carry out the purpose and intent of the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
You want me to read that description?
The auditor for legislative audit purposes has specifically requested that I place the legal description in that motion. So, if you would, please.
Okay, I will read that legal description. North sixty feet and south eighty feet of lots thirty-one and thirty-two in block one-oh-seven of the original townsite of Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota, known as seven-seventeen Third Street and three-oh-four Quincy Street.
Thank you, Commissioner Troutman.
Does the addition agree with the second?
Yep.
It agrees, okay. So, now we have the motion and the second. Any further comment or discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll be voting no. It's two properties, a hundred and assessed, one of them was assessed at a hundred-and-one-point-eight-thousand, the other one is assessed at fifty-six-point-eight, and that comes out to about a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand roughly. And we're offering a hundred-and-ninety. And I think one of our citizens spoke a little bit about wasteful spending a minute or two ago, and I consider this wasteful spending. Thank you.
Oh, in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item thirteen, buildings and grounds.
Good morning, Mike Cool, construction project manager, Buildings and Grounds. As the board is aware, the building committee has been overseeing the development of a number of projects. The NAU, former NAU building, is one of those projects that we were looking at. And at this time, we feel that we have sufficient understanding of the project that we're seeking to move forward with a design contract. Just to provide a little background of some of the work that the building committee has done up to this point relative to this project. The items that were, the department's programs that we're looking at and putting into this building were identified as, these needs for these programs were identified in the 2010 facilities master plan. The committee has done, did an initial acquisition assessment of the former building. That was done internally. Then we did an appraisal for the property, which the value of that was, I believe, about three, four-point-four million dollars. We negotiated the purchase of that property, which we acquired it for three-point-nine-five million dollars. So, we did buy it for less than their appraised value. Along the way, we sold the former Adams Street facility to the city. That was, served some of the functions that will be going into this NAU building. So, that portion has been addressed. The value, that property was, I think, valued at a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in just terms of a property value, and we did sell it to the city for two-hundred thousand dollars. We have negotiated the purchase. Jay Alderman was just up here in regard to one of the, or two of the properties associated with that block. We've acquired those properties so that we have room for parking. Also allows us flexibility in how we utilize that facility going forward in the future in our planning. And it also gives the owners an opportunity to sell at a time when the function of that facility is going to change. We executed, worked with a consultant, had them do some detailed documentation and analysis of the building so that we understood what we had exactly. As far as the documentation, they verified that it is a very solid, well-built building that's worthy of investment. We also did an updated needs assessment relative to the programs and departments that we're looking at putting in there. That revealed that actually, the needs for that facility were greater than we expected initially with our initial assessment. So, right now, it appears that we could nearly fill the building if we execute a full contract for remodeling the entire building. And we also secured nine-hundred thousand dollars, a nine-hundred thousand dollar commitment from the city of Rapid City for a portion of the detox facility that will be going into there. The contract for the design services that we're seeking approval for today include rezoning the property, doing a planned development overlay, removal of structures on the surrounding properties, then the design and a phased remodel of the building. At this time, the building committee wants to take kind of a cautious approach to this project. We're looking at trying to execute a five-million-dollar construction contract. At least that's how we're proceeding with it at this time for this. Now, that won't remodel that entire building. Right now, the, we're estimating construction costs. If we did the entire building, probably could be in the range from eight to nine million dollars. That's what we've heard from the design team. If additional funding comes available, like with the, through the grant process that the sheriff's department had sought earlier, other fundings through sources like we acquired, got some properties, some funding through the city as well, we'll evaluate that as we move down a little bit further down the process. But the intent is, right now, to design the entire remodel of the building. And because we're nearly filling the building right from the beginning, where we thought that we could probably get by and just utilize spaces as they were, because of the, since we're nearly filling it, or will be filling it, at some point, we have to be a lot more efficient in the use of the space. So, it's going to require us to reorganize those spaces. So, therefore, the need for the redesign, redesign the entire building. Some of the things that are going in this facility are Health and Human Services, the city and county alcohol and drug programs. Now, those include the, their outpatient services, detox, and their residential treatment programs. Some of the things that, some of the major construction items that will be included in this will be construction of a second floor over the gymnasium to add square footage, construction of two new elevators, and likely, mostly, new electrical and mechanical systems for the building. We have negotiated a contract with, proposed contract with upper deck architects who have worked with us on some of this earlier study work for a contract to design this facility, an entire facility, for seven-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. And I'm seeking your approval of this contract today.
Any questions for Mike?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Peterson, I appreciate everything and all the work you do on the buildings and grounds and getting these, with Mr. Alderman, these agreements down. My bottom line is, someone had mentioned about wasteful spending, and I'm trying to figure out if you had planned ahead for at least ten years to change up these buildings and for the courthouse to no longer have our facility there. And all of this has been in the works. And then some people come in as new and don't know all this or don't go to these meetings to figure all this out, and then come back and call it wasteful spending. Well, you are selling properties, and that were assessed at a hundred-and-fifty, got two-hundred thousand. You are getting money from the city at nine-hundred thousand. We are getting grants. Most of our judicial system with Kevin has been collecting overcollected revenues and different stuff for us. We are leasing a building from, I think, the city for twenty-four-seven, which is costing us extra money. We are going to sell the La Crosse Street property. We are eventually going to try and switch the Saint Joe property, sell that, and put our facilities for mechanics and stuff on these properties that we are buying. How could you call that wasteful spending? You're also over and above, some of the facilities are outgrown so bad. And when people go into detox, or they go into drug rehabilitation, or they go into some of these programs like crisis care, which we have all seen, they need these facilities. So, we can say wasteful spending, but when you're the first one to have your family member or anybody in these facilities, if you're saying that's wasteful, how we're trying to make a better facility and selling other properties in order to accommodate the people of Rapid City or Pennington County, I'm sorry, that's not wasteful spending at all. Buildings and grounds, and Jay Alderman are, and this building committee have worked hard to get these numbers where they're at. We don't have one meeting on these facilities. These facilities have been in the works for over ten years, having meetings to try to get where we're at today. And if I don't trust anybody, or I should say it the other way, if I trust somebody, and I believe they micromanage projects, which I've seen Jay and Mike Cool detail everything, where I'm like, "What are you doing that for?" I mean, we trust you. But it's still good for the public to see. Anytime you'd like to see how this works, Mike Cool has the paperwork. He has the information of not wasteful spending. When you're needing these facilities, and they're over and above being used to the point where there's no more room, what do you do? You get them done. And you take care of the public the best way you can by bonding and getting some of this stuff done to the point where you don't get behind the game because it costs you, ask the governor, it costs you a lot more money getting behind the game than it does getting ahead of the game. And still, you just heard Mike say, we don't have enough room for the facilities that we even want to put in that building. So, I'm going to have to disagree with the wasteful spending. It looks like it because we're getting these buildings, but we're not saying all the information of selling other things and how much hard work it took to get where we are today. So...
Thank you. I see the advertising on TV all the time. The more you spend, the more you save. And that's what we're doing.
Mr. Buskrud, I disagree because, bottom line is, again, when these facilities are well-used by the taxpayers of Rapid City and Pennington County, I disagree. If we could save more money, then you tell me how, in Health and Human Services or anything, how we can reduce that? And we won't need those buildings, and we won't do any more spending.
I have always said we probably need the buildings. I'm questioning the timing. And I'm also questioning, I remember before this building was built and before you were around doing it, we thought, I think I was one of them, and said, "Let's go over to NAU and remodel that building." And what I found out was that they've inspected it, and it's a piece of junk. Now, all of a sudden, it's a well-built building.
I never called it well-built, but I think it's well-needed.
Mr. Chair, if I might, revealed that, or updated needs assessment, revealed that needs were greater than initially thought. My goodness gracious, has anybody ever heard that before? That's a huge, huge, huge... That's a huge, huge, huge building. How many, how many feet of, square feet of floor space is that going to replace?
I'm going to ask, before we have any further discussion, that we have a motion to discuss.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize the chair's signature to the AIA document, B101-2007, standard form of agreement between owner and architect dated June 1, 2016, between Pennington County and Upper Deck Architects, Inc., for professional services related to rezoning and preparing a planned development overlay of acquired properties and the design and construction of the project identified as the Pennington County Health Facility, for a total lump sum fee of $753,000 plus reimbursable expenses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a substitute motion. Before we go awarding an architect contract, let's sharpen the pencil on this reimbursable Transportation, authorized out-of-town travel and subsistence.
Is this part of your motion?
This is part of my motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out a couple of the, there's 11 items on the reimbursable expenses. I think we ought to take a sharp pencil to that. It's a blank check. Thank you.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
But it is.
Motion fails for lack of a second. Back to the original motion. Any further comments on the original motion?
Yes, I would have, people look at the budgets, and if you don't think there's needs, then look how much we are spending on health and human services and other programs that are going in these buildings and see what that's costing us. And then tell me that there isn't more needs. And obviously, if you've been in this community, which I've been in, going to meetings with all kinds of different people on detox and drug and juvenile justice and collective impact and different things on housing and mental health in Rapid City, and you think there isn't more needs that we could help with in one sense, it's going to cost you more in the long run if you don't help people now. And if you think it's, there isn't enough need, or there isn't, as George made a smart ale con mic on the need...
That's Commissioner Farabee to you, ma'am.
Okay.
Then, look at your budget, Mr. Farabee, and tell me that there isn't more needs than we have money.
Okay.
And then call it wasteful spending, because you went to crisis care, and I didn't see you say any wasteful spending there. In fact, you appraised them, or however that word is, about how great they were. But now, you're saying they're wasteful spending.
That's enough. Any further comments on the motion itself?
Mr. Chair, any estimate, any dollar estimate as to what this blank check compensation for reimbursable expenses, any idea what that'll wind up being?
It'll be five to $7,000.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call.
No.
Farabee?
No.
Catcock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14.
Gordon Wendell, Equalization. I'm here to request an abatement. We have a request for an abatement from John Corr, who is not here this morning. This is at 3119 Turtle Creek Court in Rapid City. The request is due to a fire at the property, and our office recommends that you grant this abatement.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Item 15. Item 15, this is from the Compensation Committee.
Good morning, Nick Stroud, HR Director and Chair of the Compensation Committee. What we have in front of you today is some items that were presented to our Compensation Committee in May from the sheriff's office, from Stephanie McCoy, their HR manager, and from Kevin Toom, our sheriff. And these are some changes to grades for a position and changes to a title, and so we, and then re-addition of a supervisor position. And this was presented to the Compensation Committee and discussed and voted unanimously to support. And so, I would be here today to ask for a motion to approve this, and I also have Stephanie and Kevin here for some more technical questions, if there are any.
Any questions for Nick? Do we have a motion?
Do we have to read them individually, Nick, or just put...
We were thinking they could be adopted as one. The recommend, I guess the motion I'd be asking for is to accept the recommendation of the Compensation Committee for the changes in the sheriff's office.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is item 16.
Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. National, Black Hills National Forest is accepting comments on a proposed Rushmore Connector Trail that would connect the Mickelson Trail near Hill City to Mount Rushmore on their, on their EIS process. There was some open houses last week. I didn't get a chance to attend the open house, but I was at the National Forest Advisory Board meeting where it was discussed. I guess I have a couple of concerns. We do have some scattered patches of spotted napweed, a highly invasive noxious weed, that we're trying to contain in the Horse Thief Lake area, where the trail will be going through. I'm concerned that construction and moving material will spread that weed, and then also, once the trail is completed, continued maintenance of that. Currently, the noxious weed maintenance on the Mickelson Trail isn't the best, so my concern is there that it would continue to spread. And then also, possible lack of access in the area on trying to do natural resource management in the area. So, I was bringing it to you. Nancy was at the NFAB meeting as well, Commissioner Troutman, and I thought I'd bring it to the Commissioners to see if you guys had, if the Commission had any additional concerns on the construction. It is all in Pennington County. It's about a 15 to 17-mile connector trail, so...
We have the website to put on the board, so in case people wanted to look about, or look at the information or what you're doing.
Yeah, you want me to put it on the computer?
Yep.
See if I can do that here.
Thank you, Scott. We do have a lot of trail enthusiasts in South Dakota and otherwise.
And it's, it'll be all on National Forest property or, or Mount Rushmore property, except for, I think it's 10th of a mile, that'll go through the KOEA.
Mr. Chair, while Scott's finding that, I do think that he has legitimate concerns about the maintenance of the trail. It's through a heavily, and I guess I'm looking at it maybe a little differently than noxious weeds, but we definitely have an area through there where it's, it's had a lot of bug kill. It's got a lot of problems. If they don't put it in correctly, I think it's going to be dangerous. And I think that's something that I have not heard addressed at all in any of the presentations. So, I think that that's important, that we not only worry about the maintenance of the trail for weeds, but, but there's going to be maintenance with trees falling and everything unless they cut way back from the trail. And so, I think that's a question that should be asked. And I also, I'm a little concerned about emergency response and law enforcement. We've had issues on the Mickelson Trail, and now we've got two governments that are trying to figure things out, and then there'd be us, the third one. I think that those are questions that we need to ask, is how do they plan to handle that? Because it'll be our emergency response, search and rescue and so on, and our volunteer fire departments, as well as our sheriff's department, that are going to be needing to get on there. And that has been a problem in the, sometimes on the Mickelson Trail. So, those are things that should be brought up and discussed. I'm not against the trail. I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Nancy? So, do we need to do something with this commission to bring up those concerns, or can Scott just bring them forward?
If, if, I think we should have a letter.
Yeah, and I can consult with, I can help draft that letter, and I can consult with emergency response services and see what the issues have been in the past and make sure those are addressed.
Yeah.
Same with the public safety, we can put that in there as well.
I think that would be good, and then bring that forward, so people know that we were concerned as a board and yourself, Scott, on this issue, because Nancy brought up some really good points, so...
So, I guess if it's, if there's anything else, let me know, but if it's all right, then I'll just write on behalf, because it'll carry more weight coming from the Commissioners than just coming from myself. So, I will draft those and hopefully have them ready for the next meeting for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Guffey?
Mr. Chair, would you like a motion for that? Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we ask our Natural Resources Director, Scott Guffey, to draft a letter to respond to the Rushmore Connector Trail, expressing our concerns.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, the next item is item 17, and I'm going to preface this item with a few remarks. The issue has been generated by a public notice that identified petitions being sent to the state water board requesting declaratory judgments on two items, in other words, two petitions. Those then became a public property in which a procedure is provided and for participation. And I'm going to ask Kinsley to come forward and describe the whole process so that the public understands exactly what we're addressing.
Okay. Kinsley, girl from the state's attorney's office. So, what we're addressing is a request by Mr. George Farabee for rulings by the South Dakota Water Management Board. And there's two different petitions. So, he's requesting two different declaratory rulings, and they're basically about systems. One is about onsite wastewater treatment systems that were constructed before 1975, and then also pre-1975 outhouses and cesspools. So, he's requested these, or he's requested rulings from the South Dakota Water Management Board, and there was a notice that was required to be put out to the public, and so that was done by Mr. Farabee and the newspapers. I think there, there is a question, considering the issue that he brings up is something that's extremely broad. I think there's a question of how the different counties will respond to this, these different petitions, because these petitions basically are requesting that localities have no power to regulate systems that are pre-1975. So, in regards to the whole process, there was this notice requirement that Mr. Farabee was required to do, and then now, people from the public, different localities, have the opportunity to respond to his two petitions, and people can either support Mr. Farabee's petition, or they can oppose Mr. Farabee's petition. So, if the county wanted to do either of those things, the county would need to submit petitions, either in favor or in opposition, and submit those to the South Dakota Water Management Board with some specific things being in those petitions. For instance, the petitioner, which would be Pennington County Board of Commissioners, and Penning, the petitioner's interest in the petition for the declaratory ruling, and also the reasons why Pennington County would either be in favor or in opposition to the petition for declaratory ruling, and some other information about mailing address, legal counsel, if there is any, and request for a continuance is something that can be requested by anyone, and it's, it's a request that automatically will get granted if it is requested. And then also, the petition would require a signature at the bottom. And so, those are, those are the different things that would have to go into any sort of petition done by Pennington County, if Pennington County wishes to do so. There are different entities, other local governments that might also submit petitions. It could be anyone from the public that submits petitions, but once the petitions are submitted, then any, the entity or person that submits those petitions has the opportunity to appear in front of the South Dakota Water Management Board, which is under the auspices of Department of Environment and Natural Resources. And so, anyone has the opportunity to go in front of that board. Currently, there's a hearing scheduled for...
July 6.
July 7, I believe?
6.
6, that's what it was. July 6. And if anyone requests a continuance, likely that would be continued on to around October 5, and that would be the next Water Management Board meeting. And once at that actual meeting or the hearing, then any person or entity that has submitted a petition would have the opportunity to present any sort of evidence, arguments, put on witnesses if desired, but it's actually a pretty informal process once it gets to the Water Management Board. And after that, the Water Management Board can actually make a determination, so can rule, and, or the board can decide not to rule. So, that's the basic process pertaining to submitting petitions in opposition or for the petition submitted by Mr. Farabee. And one, one issue is that you have the statutes on declaratory rulings, and normally, under the statutes, a declaratory ruling is something where this governmental agency is supposed to rule on the applicability of a statute, a rule, a provision, something like that, to a set factual situation. So, this is, in many ways, kind of an odd request, because there's actually this statute, 12615, an administrative rule pertaining to the South Dakota Water Management Board that says that a person may request the Water Management Board to issue a decision on the applicability of a statutory provision rule or order pertaining to a submitted factual situation with... situation within the board's jurisdiction. And so I think there would be some question from the county's standpoint as to whether this is even something that is appropriate for the Water Management Board to hear, given that it doesn't appear that there's a factual situation set in that, in either of those petitions. So just wanted to put that out there.
Any questions for Kinsley?
Yes, by chance, what is, George is, or maybe you have to ask George or Kinsley, maybe Kinsley knows, is your onsite wastewater system before 1975? Is that why you're doing this, George?
I think...
I guess I don't.
We talk about the process, not specifics, if you would please.
Well, why I'm saying that is because these petitions are February 28, 1975, before that. So I'm trying to, okay, I'm just going to say it up straight. Is he protecting his interests or the interests of Pennington County or other people? Because why wouldn't you put, if you didn't like onsite wastewater systems or you have problems with outhouses, why wouldn't you just put that in general and try to find rules or come to Pennington County and try to change those rules? Instead, put a specific date at February 28, 1975? So are, I guess my bottom line is, are you doing this to protect yourself or are you doing this to protect the people you represent? So if it's factual or not, I'm still not understanding why you'd put that date if you were trying to fight onsite wastewater systems, which I know George has done, which I don't have a problem with, if that's his passion, or outhouses? Does that make sense to anybody? I'm not getting the February 28, 1975. Is your, by chance, Commissioner Farabee, is your system before 1975? Is that why you're, you're only putting February 28, 1975?
Just before we go any further, these kinds of questions, I think, relate to now, they're in the hands of the water board. And so the question is, what position, if any, does Pennington County, through their commission, choose to take? But before we go any further, if, give Commissioner Farabee the opportunity to say anything he wishes in terms of this particular issue.
I'll have one comment and that's I'm exercising my rights under the law. Thank you.
Okay.
It's hard, it's hard for me to make a decision, yes or no, because I guess with this position, I guess I'd like to know, Commissioner Farabee, I think your constituents in general, you're at the dais defending something you believe in, which I appreciate. But are you doing it, and that's where I, again, I believe you should, if you have a passion for something, you should fight it. But if you're doing it to be self-serving, that's a different story and it's hard for me to, to vote in, for your passion or why you're doing this, George. How about that?
Mr. Chair, I guess I got an additional comment. Hundred and five legislators gave the agency, in this case, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, the authority to enact rules. And rules have the force and effect of law. Those rules were passed along about 1975, thereabouts. The public had a chance to comment, all folks in South Dakota had a chance to comment on those rules. And those rules, like I say, are laws. And all I'm asking, do those two specific rules, and I could have picked out other ones, but do those two specific rules mean what the words say? Or do they mean what a local government wants them to say? Let me repeat that. The rules have the force and effect of law. The hundred and five legislators, along with the governor, gave DNR the authority to enact those rules, implement those rules. They say in black and white to most of us what they say. I don't believe they're being followed and all I want the Water Management Board to do, those seven people, to make a ruling. And they don't have to make a ruling, by the way. That's one of the rulings, they can say it, we're not going to make a ruling. But do those words say what they say or do they say something else? If they say something else, what is that something else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Busker.
Oh, well, I'm going to make a motion, but if you want to sit here first.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we direct the state's attorney's office to file a petition in opposition to the two declaratory ruling petitions regarding administrative rule.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chair, my discussion would be, if you're opposed to the rules as written, then way back when, this body or any other person, any other interested individual or agency should have been at those rule hearings. Those rules are law. How can you be opposed to what's written in law? Let me repeat, how can you be opposed to what's written?
Let me be, let me answer that. Is that every rule, every law is up for interpretation. And they're not cut and dried. If they were all cut and dried, we wouldn't need any lawyers, we wouldn't need any judges. You just read the law, read the rule, and there it is. Well, that's not the case in this country. Everyone is up for interpretation. You have yours and I'm, I'm asking that the state's attorney support us because we have a, this is a very important, very important issue because we, it is, we have an ordinance that George is trying, Commissioner Farabee is trying to say is no good. So we need that to protect our water supply.
Mr. Chair, I, I believe it goes beyond anything that Pennington County. I mean, it's important to us to have a say at the table, but I think even more importantly, the way this is written, it says that cities and counties do not have the right. That is taking away local control. And that, more than anything, is a concern for me. And so I, I feel that we need to defend the ability to have local control. I think that we've, all five said we believe in it, but sometimes you have to practice what you believe in and that's what I'm doing. I'm saying that we need to protect local control.
Mr. Chair, just two things, wondering if the state's attorney's office can include in the petition, first, that it would be for your signature, Mr. Chair? And then also, there's a question of whether it would be desired to request this automatic continuance.
Commissioner Busker.
Sure, I, the signature part, I mean, you, you want our chairman to sign it, not you, I take it.
Yes, please.
And sure, I think we, our continuance doesn't hurt. I guess I would add that to the motion if you want that, but you've, everybody's more time to figure it out, I guess. It's fine.
And the second, we'll go on.
Okay.
So Karen, are you able to include that in the motion and that's approved by the second?
Nancy? Did you?
Anything further?
Just one more thing. Commissioner Farabee, I appreciate your, as much as people get, they're, don't agree with you, that you put this forth because it needs to have a ruling on it. And I thank you for the history and why you brought that forward. Because I know it's your passion to do this and at least you're trying to do something, even though people disagree or it might not pass. I still have to say, we got to give it to George because he, he, that, that freaking onsite wastewater stuff, that's just his passion. And he's going to fight it no matter what. And this is what he's going to do, at least, and I had told him before, if you're going to do something, do something about it. If you're going to keep whining about how the system sucks, then do something, George. So you have to give him that, that at least he's trying to do something about it. And if it fails, at least, again, he, he tried to put his passion forward. So I'm not in agreement with what you're doing, George, in one sense. In the other, I totally agree because that's your passion, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I think the water board needs to speak to this. Yes, you may.
Dan Richard, again. To answer your question, Commissioner Farabee is not in this for personal reasons. As he's said to me several times, this is about the people in his district. And he's probably got more septic systems in his district than everybody except Commissioner Peterson. And the other question I've got is, I, this was in the paper on Thursday.
Excellent.
And you're, by your policy, that, your cutoff date is Wednesday. How did this get here?
I think there's such things as email and websites and things of that kind that precede those dates.
Who put that in?
It can be verified. Just seems, seems strange that no, nobody, I don't know. Does West Dakota have any position in this matter or are they planning to petition?
No, it was to go to, it was brought up at the executive meeting and the executive decision was to let the board discuss it at their next meeting, which will be on the 13th, I believe. So it'll be, beyond that.
Too, too late for...
Too late, yeah.
For the hearing.
But they didn't want to make that decision based on only four people there. So they wanted the whole nine, nine members there and it's going to be too late.
Mr. Richard, explain what you mean by the deadline was Wednesday? The deadline for us to petition or the deadline?
The line to be on the agenda by your policy, it would have been Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Yet this was not printed until Thursday. I didn't see it in the paper until Thursday. And I know...
That is Wednesday.
I know, that is not how George writes. So I don't know who wrote those, those petition requests, but that's neither here nor there because I haven't talked to him about that, but that's not how George writes, so I don't know who wrote those.
So, Mr. Chair, can I just ask, what did not George write?
I don't think he wrote those petition requests or the petition notifications that are in the paper. I, I don't know, I haven't talked to him about it, but I don't think he wrote them.
Who, who did?
I don't know, but that's not how George writes and you all know how George writes. So, I don't know where they came from, but I don't think it was him and he's...
Mr. Chair, could we please ask how you got the wording for those petitions that were put in the Wednesday paper?
Certainly. If I may, Mr. Chair, yes, I'd be glad to answer that. These aren't my words and I wouldn't have written them this way. This hearing is an adversary proceeding and the guy that wrote this was an engineer out of peer, DNR. In fact, the guy was here back a couple of months ago on the crow thing. I mean, he and I discussed this and, and I kind of had to give, either it's got notes in the paper with their words or wasn't even hearing. So I had to give. But I wouldn't have written it this way. This is not a contested, all I'm asking for is this agency to make a ruling on, do the words say what they say? The South, excuse me. Excuse me.
I'm agreeing with you.
The South Dakota Supreme Court has said over and over and over, if the words are clear, not arbitrary, not ambiguous, then the court's only task is to declare the meaning. Let me repeat that. If the words are clear, black and white, the court's only function is to declare the meaning. Dozens and dozens of Supreme Court cases. Let me talk about local control in Supreme Court cases. The Supreme Court has said over and over, including to this county in 1994, counties are a creature of statute. That obviously is antithetical to local control. The only local control that we or the cities have is that which is provided by the state legislature. We are creatures of statute. I didn't write these words and I wouldn't have written it this way. These two notices, they wouldn't even combine the two notices, even though the words are identical. This cost me about 700 bucks out of my pocket. I'm doing this for the constituents of all the rural constituents of Pennington County, not just my district. I'm doing this for the state of South Dakota. The state of Florida tried to enact this in legislature to have, go back retroactively, ex post facto, and have their septic systems inspected like Pennington County has. I'll still, and they didn't get it passed. I'll still maintain this is the only county, United States of America, that has a retroactive, retroactive application to its rural residents. Thank you.
Anything further on the motion?
What's, what's the, what's the delay? Why do we need to delay? Let's have the hearing in July and get it over with.
Roll call vote.
Busker?
Yes.
Farabee?
I'll abstain, obviously.
Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, motion carried. Okay, item eighteen. Any items from the chair or commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I, I have one. And it's been brought up before and I, I can't, we can't make a motion or anything. I think I would like Jay's comment on, we did pass an ordinance instituting wheel tax. It got referred and voted down. Does that, is that the end of it or do we have to do some, repeal the old, even though it's not in effect?
Do you have to rescind it?
Do we have to rescind it, repeal it, do whatever?
I will take a look at that, Commissioner.
And put it on...
But I, my feeling as I stand here is that that ordinance was passed subject to referendum. It got referred and defeated, therefore I believe the ordinance is defeated.
Yeah, and, and it's not on our books. Shouldn't be on our books.
I think it's a moot issue, but I will take a look at that specifically.
Mr. Chair, I do have one item. If you're talking about commission members, I, you know how I feel about the 319 project and I saw on the vouchers, $7,335.93 for a second home for a guy out of Sioux Falls. And you and I visited, Mr. Chair, visited that site back last summer when, when the folks from EPA were here with their dog and pony show and went out there and looked. And I'll bet you that, that after all the rain last summer, that there was more dirt, more sediment, whatever, wound up down Mitchell Lake than would have happened in the, in the following 10 years if we wouldn't have disturbed the soil at this site. So, so much for BMPs. BMPs, best management practice. Who in the hell decides what's a BMP? Thank you.
I'd like to counteract that. How do you know, are you guessing that there's more or you have an engineer's report saying your factual information?
Mr. Chair, if I might, when you're about in the fifth grade, you realize that when you take the grass away from dirt and it rains, dirt winds up going downhill. Thank you.
So you do have factual information, you just think it's smarter than a fifth grader to know it? Is that what you're trying to say to us? George Farabee's guessing game at what happens downstream. When you become a water protection person and know that factual information in engineer report, George, then, and you can prove it, I will agree with you.
Okay, committee reports.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I went to Council on Aging and Mr. Farabee, Commissioner Farabee showed up. We had a good discussion, I thought, and I was thankful that George was there, frankly. Just to see the operations. They will begin to discuss their budget at the appropriate time. And so if you have any questions for him, I was, what they do, and I have it out in my truck, I have a list of, of what record, what their qualifications are to get some money from, for transportation. And I'll bring that in, give it to everybody so you kind of got a heads up on what they're going to talk about.
Mr. Busker, he did send us, the man in charge sent us an email on it too, so I appreciated that information back as well, so thank you.
I don't believe I got that.
I'll, I'll bring it in. I, I meant to bring it in and I left it out in my truck, but I will get it.
Mr. Chair, I would add that I've been going to go for a long time and I'm glad I went. And if, if those two or three people that were there on that funding committee, if they're like, they're all rest, committee members, our money is in good hands. That was the impression I got.
Commissioner Haddock, do you have any reports on your two committees?
My 12 committees or my two committees?
Your... Your, um,
My update of?
Your special committees on alternative energy and mining.
We're about halfway through on, um, wind energy and then we're gonna combine solar energy into that when we're done. So we still have a few, uh, things to discuss, but what a great committee. And again, we're about halfway through going through the ordinance. We are changing some definitions and updating the verbiage on, uh, wind energy and solar energy and even the planning department is saying, um, there's some pretty awesome people on this board that are teaching them some different stuff. That has come to pass in the last 10 years on updates of alternative energy on wind and solar. So we appreciate the committee members and Holly and PJ and, um, I always cannot pronounce her, Tutima. Got it? Thank you for them helping us because we wouldn't get through without them.
Anthony?
Um, probably the most important thing I went to is that, the NFAB that, um, that Scott mentioned. There's, um, a lot of changes. They have, uh, appointed a new forest service or forest supervisor and he will be coming the end of August, from New Mexico, I believe it is. Um, he has a lot of experience in Minnesota and in the, um, northern hemisphere, which is kinda nice for us because he'll have some, uh, different ideas about acclimation. The other thing that I think was probably really important there, they're really working to, um, to come to an agreement with the, um, with the, the mountain bikers and so on and trying to help, uh, come together so that the mountain bikers aren't out there making their own trails without taking into account the damage they're doing. And, um, so I, I'm hoping, I mean, I think that's pretty contentious and I'm hoping that will, um, come about as, as a better agreement between everybody. The other thing that, um, is happening is that the forest here locally will be, um, going through a complete replan. They'll be redeveloping their plan for future healthy forests in the early twenties. But until that time, they're doing like a bridge where they're gonna be able to, um, handle the NIPA and all that needs to be handled to keep healthy forests until the time when they have the new plan. So I'm working on that committee too and it's considerable amount of work, but anyway, it's interesting.
Mr. Farabee?
Nothing.
One more. I forgot. Um, there was a, uh, three day, um, it didn't cost us anything, by the way. Three day, um, it was called collective impact study. Um, I went to that for three days and ended up, um, being appointed on the, um, diversity and cultural development committee and then community development and wow, that's gonna be a huge thing for Rapid City and Pennington County. And, uh, it's been done all over the United States and they're talking about like affordable, affordable housing, of course, diversity and cultural, uh, development, community development, economic development. There's like 10, uh, to 12 things that they are going through on these committees. And, um, the biggest issue was, are we just gonna talk about this like we have for the last 20, 30 years? Well, this collective impact, if you wanna look it up online, has been working throughout the United States and it's been doing some really positive things for changes where we can actually nail it down. And a lot of it has to do with, um, the performance outcome or performance measures and outcome measures. And to be able to not just make up what's happening in our community, but actually prove and have numbers to show the community what's really going on in Rapid City. So, in Pennington County and across the state. So it's gonna be pretty exciting to see what comes out of these groups, but, um, I'm very happy to be a part of that. Yes, it is another a couple of committees, but, um, I actually enjoy learning a lot of the stuff that we have brought forth either in Pennington County or Rapid City. So it's a pretty, pretty exciting, um, program that's going on in, in Rapid City right now. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next item is item 20. Approval of vouchers.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the vouchers. Discussion on the voucher, on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item is item 21.
Hello, good morning.
Morning.
PJ Conover, Planning Commission, uh, Planning Commission, Planning Department Director. Item 21. Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A, second reading of rezon 1604 and comprehensive plan amendment 1604 for Rich and Leanne Jensen and approval has been recommended. Item B, layout plat 1608 for William and Lila Cozel. Spurley Consulting is the agent and approval has been recommended. Item C, first reading and public hearing of plan unit development 1603 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto. Planning Commission has asked us to be continued to the July 5th, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting to address Planning Commission concerns.
Does anyone wish any of the items removed from the consent agenda? Rich, do you want yours removed? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for planning and zoning.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Rich Jensen. Myself and my wife are the owners of, uh, Double Diamond Ranch and you just approved. I wanted to tell you, uh, how much I appreciate your planning and zoning and your equalization departments. And this visit I've had with them, and I've had many in the past, but this was the most enjoyable as far as them helping me work through the issues that we have with this changing of the zoning and how helpful they were. And I can tell there's a new sheriff in town, so to speak, in the county. And I appreciate so much how, how much you guys are taking on that position. And it's been enjoyable as far as Trent and Joe with equalization, PJ and Brittany with the planning and zoning. It's been a nice experience and I'm sorry to take any more time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is item D.
That was unexpected and nice. Thank you. Item D is layout plat 1607 to create lots A and lot B of Loveland Canyon Estates number two. Uh, the applicants are Raymond and Shirley Darro and the surveyor, um, agent is Fisk Land Surveying and the representative is in the audience if you have any questions. The subject lot is 10 acres. Let me just get this up and running here. Uh, the general purpose for this request is to, is for the layout plat to subdivide the 10 acres into proposed lot A, which would be just over five and a half acres and proposed lot B would just be over 4.4 acres. Uh, due to the decrease in the lot size, this would also cause them to, um, not be in compliance with the minimum lot requirement of 10 acres and limited agriculture. So they've also applied for rezon 1605 and comprehensive plan amendment 1605, which are on the agenda next. And the reasons why this item was not on the consent calendar is only because of the rezon that you need to hear. The existing lot is 10 acres, limited agriculture is the current zoning, plan unit development is the future land use. There's no flood plan on the property. Uh, it has a single family residence. There's an approach off of Nemo. There's a current sep, there's a septic system put in 2002, operating permit as of 2011, a detached garage through a building permit in 2003. There's also a 40-foot wide access and utility easement that has been recorded with the register of deeds. So of that, what you're looking at now on the screen are the proposed lots A and proposed lots B. On proposed lot A, which would be just over five and a half acres, that would have the single family residence, the approach off of Nemo, and the operating permit detached garage and also half of the 80-foot wide monodrading utility easement, which is, um, being drawn up with this document. Lot B, it would be vacant of any structures and would be taking access off of Hazel Lane and also the, um, 40-foot access and utility easement has been recorded already. So as stated, the rezon for this property would have to be, go from limited agriculture down to at least a low-density residential. And they would exceed the three-acre minimum with their, with their requirements. This was routed through the end apartment review. The only item of concern that came back was from Black Hills Cooperative as they requested uh, that the plat showed the existing power line, um, for Black Hills Electric Cooperative. Uh, that would be done through the minor plat submittal and also is in, as a condition. Uh, therefore, the proposed subdivision, just so you know, it will increase the density in the area by one lot, but it does seem compatible with the surrounding uh, zoning and the land use. The applicant has requested that, um, 1607 is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision and future action may be required by the applicant with future submittals and subdivision regulations. Therefore, the Planning Commission approved, is recommending approval of PL 1607 with 13 conditions.
Move approval. Second, 13 conditions.
Yep, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we're gonna combine these two items or I vote them one at a time?
One at a time.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Item E is rezon 1605 and comprehensive plan amendment 1605 to rezon 10 acres from limited agriculture district to low-density residential district and to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from plan unit development sensitive to low-density residential sensi, low-density residential district. The applicants are Raymond and Shirley Darro and the surveyor and agent is from, uh, Fisk Land Surveying. Uh, we just spoke with, about this with the layout plat previously that you approved and went over the rezoning from limited agriculture down to low-density residential. And Planning Commission recommends approval of rezon 1605 and comprehensive plan amendment 1605 with no conditions of approval as all stated concerns and requirements were addressed and will be addressed with plating or building permits.
Move approval. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we, at some point in time, need to talk about fire safety. You know, there's other, well, I guess more than fire. There's only one way in and out of that development area and I haven't counted the houses and I know one of the, the residents is here and hopefully he'll get up and, and, and speak, but it's about 30 residences with one way out. And this is gonna add, potentially add one more. The, I understand that that 10 acres, the five whatever accesses Nemo Road, so that's not a problem, but the Hazel Lane one, that's, we want more residents trying to get out of that particular subdivision. And, uh, I guess Dave, can you, can you add anything? To me, I've been out there a number of times, obviously, and, and I'd like for Dave to explain the, the situation.
Do we have any regulations of how many plats can be in, on one road with no secondary access?
We do. This does not meet that requirement. It's beneath it.
Go ahead, sir. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Dave Reinhardt. I live out there on Hazel Lane. I've been there for about 12 years and the development out there started approximately in 2000. It was the Merchant Ranch. There's been about three developments out there. The last one, uh, a general contractor tried to put 29 develop, or 29 sites into the last and there was a meeting, Planning Commission meeting in about 2004, I attended that. And as a result of that, they cut it down to 12 instead of 29 and they made big issue out of Merchant Road coming in. And it's not the whole road. It's just approximately half to three quarters of a mile. It follows an old cow path and one of the turns there downhill, sloping to the left, has a drop off of about 20 to 30 feet. There's been serious accidents out there almost every year that I've been there, including, uh, one of them was a mail truck. As a result of that road, the school bus won't even come up there anymore. They used to. They stopped down at the intersection of Merchant and Norris Peak, which is also a big hazard. There's a curve there and cars wait for their kids there. And so it becomes a real hazardous situation. I'm not against people doing what they want with their land, but because they addressed this in 2004 and said something needed to be done and then didn't do anything, uh, at some point you have to take a look at this. There's still empty lots in there and they will eventually get houses. There's only been one or two houses in the last year, but the count is up to about 30 now compared to, uh, five or six when I went out there. I'd say that there's around 60 cars every morning that leave and then come back at night. Uh, in 2007, there was a forest fire right across the road. I can't remember what the name of it was. It burned 100 acres. Started on a Sunday afternoon. It was about, it was during the seven-year drought. It was about 103 degrees and a 30 mile an hour wind blowing towards the northwest. So it was blowing the fire away, but at about 4:30 in the afternoon, the wind switched, came back from that direction. You could not get out of this property. The soot and black curtain that came in there where this entrance is, you, uh, unless you've ever seen that, it's hard to describe. It's like just a black curtain and that's it. The only thing I could think of that you could maybe save yourself was in the middle of this, there's a grass area. You could have gone there. Well, what happened was the forest fire created its own rainstorm and it rained about three inches and that took care of the situation, but the fire went on for another two or three days. They were using helicopters and so on and some of the fire department on television said if that rainstorm wouldn't have started, they would have been fighting that fire down on Highway 44. Anyway, I think it's a situation, the access to the property, everybody's mind included, that should be addressed and specifically that first half to three quarters of a mile. Ian?
Mr. Reinhardt, where would the road go? I mean, is it gonna go through somebody else's property? Where would the second access be for that area?
Well, I don't, I don't, uh, pretend to say that somebody else should supply the property. The, the road that goes out of there is on someone's property now and it has, there's no history behind it. It's been just allowed to be there. If you check the books, you won't find that the county has any claim to it. Both sides of the existing road are owned by the same property owner. If I could tell you, if I had that ability to where the road should go, it would still be on his property. But as Hazel comes out, if you took a look straight west, it's a lot less grayed and you could go straight down to Norris Peak. Whereas now you've got this curlicue going down. It's all the same owner and I'm sure he would not be delighted to have another road come through, but.
And sir, I remember coming out to your properties, remember on the road district issue that you guys were having out there. So that's why I was asking you, where would that secondary access? Then I'd ask PJ, how many, on, on one road, how many people are allowed before the, the developer has to, or even the person building house, houses or house, have to provide a secondary access?
I don't remember the exact number.
Because I know in the city is 40. Is it 40 in the county too? Okay.
Also, just keep in mind that this, there's two road districts that oversee this road. The fire coordinator did comment about this and so did the highway department.
Yes, and I remember they split when we went to the.
Okay, we have another person that'd like to comment.
That's okay. Good morning. My name's Janelle Fink. I'm with Fisk Land Surveying and we're as, acting as agents for the Darrows. And I do not by any means wanna discount or disregard public safety concerns. We live in a forested area. We live with the dangers of fire and flood almost throughout the county every day. Um, I was part of the county subdivision ordinance rewrite committee. I think it was 2007 where we worked diligently with your fire coordinator. We worked with the county engineer and we established that 40 limit threshold. We worked with the county engineer, and we established that 40 limit threshold, which seems to be, at least locally, recognized as, you know, a reasonable or appropriate number. As PJ pointed out, this, for this particular area, this does fall underneath that threshold. So unless we take a look from different areas, I don't know that there's a basis that you can object to what we're doing here if we're operating within the ordinance. Maybe there's other things you want to do to consider to add on, but for today, I believe that we are proposing something that is, lives within the ordinance, and I don't see a basis for denying the request. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, my concern with that area is it's not anywhere close to what I would consider normal, getting out. The road itself is Merchant Road. At some point in time, needs to be reworked, and I know it's not a planning issue, but... So for people getting out of there, it's not going to be a hasty retreat or a hasty escape. And I, I still think in that area like that, there needs to be at least a makeshift route out of there, whether it's 30 or 40 or whatever. I think we have, we have an obligation before, before we allow any more houses to have some kind of escape route out of there.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Is that a road district up in that area?
Yes.
Yes, two.
So then that takes away the responsibility from the county, and that becomes a road district, doesn't it?
There's two up there now.
There's two up there.
So perhaps they can get that on their agenda and work through that.
Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item F.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, environmental planning supervisor. Item F is the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Advisory Group member changes. I'm just asking that the board make a motion to remove Black Hills Resource Conservation and Development off of the advisory group, since they are now the project coordinators for the project, and to remove the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, since there is no longer a local representative here. And in addition, since there was a retirement with the Forest Service, I would like to change the name of the gentleman that is the representative for the United States Forest Service to David Venezuela.
Any questions for Brittany? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to remove Black Hills Resource Conservation and Development District and the Rural Community Assistance Corporation positions that are on the advisory group committee, and change the name of the representative for the United States Forest Service from Les Gagneur to David Venezuela.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, Brittany, can, the Dakota Water District, they can go into these meetings at any time and make comments, and, and the second, that'd be the first comment. And the second one is, were they on this board before?
The first one is yes, and the second, they were. At any time, anyone that would wish to be on the advisory group could petition the board, and I believe that they were asked by the board at some point for a letter to be, and I, and I'm trying to remember clearly. I think there was a representative from West Dakota at a previous prior meeting, asking about representation on this advisory group, and I think the board had directed a, remember if I'm correct, Nancy, but they had asked for a letter from that board requesting such.
And we never got a letter?
Not that I'm aware.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Thank you. Items from the public.
Could I, could I ask a question, and then I won't bother? I know you've gone past. I wanted you to tell me what you meant by the road district comment. I represent one of the road districts, and we don't know necessarily what we can and can't do. What did you mean? Can the road district petition?
You, it's your, I'm sorry.
We're not supposed to...
You take on responsibility for your roads when, because you collect the tax for it.
But the road in is a county road that we're talking about. It's not a road district road. It's a county road.
Oh, that's what I was trying to figure out, but...
An escape route should be on us, not on them.
So I think that, okay, that's interesting to figure out. We do need to figure it out.
Well, if there's some action I can take, I'm on one of those road districts, you know.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Jay Alderman with the State Attorney's Office. If there's a county road that's inside the road district, typically, my understanding is that county road is, is within the jurisdiction of the road district, if it's within the boundaries, if it passes through.
No, the road districts are separate from the county. The county road leads into them.
Right.
Where we are.
But does it go through, the county road go through the road district?
No, it's dead end.
Okay.
So then, I guess I'm still wondering, if you guys are wanting an escape route out of your area, out of your district, then aren't they responsible for dealing with that? Because the county road doesn't go in there. We don't have jurisdiction within that, do we?
Sounds to me like possibly...
It's a legal question.
PJ can help clarify this whole relationship by contacting the highway department and the road district, and you could work together and...
So the, the highway department, talk to them?
Talk to highway, Julie from the auditor, and PJ are three contacts that can help you with how the road district works and what you're responsible for, would be Julie. Planning could help you with the second access, and highway would tell you...
I think there's two issues. The, one is the escape. The other one is that, that first part of the county road, that's what I really concern myself with the most.
On private property. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chair, if I might, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two road districts, plus there's some other people that aren't in a road district.
Oh.
So you've got three...
There's three road districts.
Okay, three, okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Bottom line, they need an escape route.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Very confusing.
Okay, anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission? If not, next item is item 23.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to go into executive session for a personnel issue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Just to clarify for the executive session, if there'd be a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee.
Okay, so do you want to include that in your motion?
Yes, I will make that my motion.
Is that acceptable to the second?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a substitute motion, that I don't believe this is a matter that falls under SDCL 125-2, sub 1.
Does your motion...
Make a motion...
To not hold the executive session, or what is your motion?
That this, this matter is not executive session material.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second. Back to the original motion. Any further comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the motion. I'm Attorney Chuck Jasper. I represent Commissioner Farabee. It's Mr. Farabee's position that for purposes of this statute 125-2 subsection 1, he is not a public officer. His position is that public officers for purposes of this statute would be at the state level, the governor, lieutenant governor, treasurer, auditor, secretary of state, commissioners of school and public lands, the attorney general, supreme court justices, circuit court judges, PUC commissioners, locally, the state's attorney, treasurer, auditor, sheriff, and the registered deeds. As far as employees, at the state level, we'd be looking at highway patrolmen, DCI officers, clerks of court. Locally, directors of equalization, highway superintendent, veteran services officer, coroner, planning and zoning director, civil defense, emergency management, commissioners' assistants, and of course, all the other employees. You folks would not be employees. You folks also would not be public officers, because you're not full-time. You're part-time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may speak to that. We clearly have a disagreement on what amounts to a public officer for executive session. I would ask the commission to take a vote.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor of the motion, answer the roll.
Yes.
Farabee?
No.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Farabee, I assume you want me to attend executive session as your counsel?
Yes. I'm going to have to stay.
Okay.
Mr.?
No, you're going to have to...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, address Commissioner Farabee briefly.
Please.
Commissioner Farabee, is it your plan to attend executive session today?
I will have counsel. I'll be, I'll have, I'll have counsel, yes.
Is it your plan to either yourself or, and/or with counsel, attend executive session today?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may suggest to the commission that I believe, and Mr. Farabee, Commissioner Farabee is well aware of this, he has a clear conflict of interest today. He was aware of why we are going into executive session today. He's not acknowledging that. So what I would ask the commission to entertain is two motions. The first motion would be to move pursuant to SDCL 6-1-17 to declare and identify that Commissioner Farabee has a conflict of interest with regard to the topic of today's executive session, and the possible action resulting therefrom involving a discussion of the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee, and specifically in that Commissioner Farabee is the subject of the personnel matter involved in today's proposed executive session.
You need a motion? I would move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
What statute was that?
6-1-17.
Tell us the specific wording of SDCL 6117.
I don't have it memorized, but the purpose of it is if the commissioner or public officer or official does not recognize on their own accord they have a conflict, the commission, in this case, can declare it for them, identify it and declare it for them, and exclude them from any further discussion or vote on any matter.
Specifically, what is the conflict? Is accused of?
Commissioner, would you please take a vote on the motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Excuse me, he's accused of a conflict? Can you not?
Sir, you're, unless you are permitted by the chair, we are now going to vote a roll call vote.
Excuse me, sir. He's accused of a conflict. Under the Constitution, he's entitled to know what he's charged with. He's charged with a conflict of interest. He's entitled to know what that conflict is.
As everyone knows, he already knows what that is. Please take a vote.
Well, as his counsel, I'm entitled to know what he's charged with, the specific charge.
Mr. Chair, has the, has Mr. Jasper been recognized by the commission chair to speak?
He hasn't asked for it, but...
I'm requesting, as his counsel, to be acknowledged as his counsel, Ms. Troutman, Commissioner Troutman.
We all have a roll call vote?
On what? What are we, what are we voting on?
On the motion.
On that motion?
Yes.
On the motion that I read, and Commissioner Troutman made it her motion.
Yes.
Farabee?
Obviously, I've got to abstain, but let me object, until we can look at that statute. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
When you abstain, you can't speak. That's the rule. When you abstain, you're abstaining. Thank you. Haddock?
Yes.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried.
The second motion I would like the commission to consider is to move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee, and to specifically exclude Commissioner Far abee from attending the executive session, or in this case, his attorney, and from participating in any subsequent vote for action that may arise therefrom.
Do we have that motion?
It'd be my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Yes, I would like on the record, an objection on behalf of Mr. Farabee to this entire proceedings. It's unconstitutional. And I think Mr. Buskerud would recognize...
Roll call vote.
Buskerud?
Yes.
Farabee?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second to come out of executive session. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good afternoon. Nick Stroud, HR Director for Pennington County. Based on the discussion in executive session, I have a motion for you to consider, and this motion would be to move to enter into record a public reprimand of Commissioner George Farabee. A complaint was filed by Planning Director PJ Conover against Commissioner George Far abee. Commissioner Farabee was given the opportunity to address or refute the claim and chose not to do so. Therefore, Commissioner George Farabee is hereby publicly reprimanded for violating Pennington County's Code of Conduct adopted December 2, 2014. The Board of Commissioners finds that he had violated Section 3, which is the members' conduct with county employees, for continued harassment, intimidation, ridicule, mockery, workplace bullying, and for continued misconduct and use of a public position to harass and create a hostile work environment for planning staff. The Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners' further moves to suspend Commissioner George Farabee from sitting on the Board of Commissioners' representative on the Planning Commission effective immediately.
Is there a motion?
I would so move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
I would like a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call's been requested. There's no further comment?
Buskerud?
Just, just a moment.
Sorry.
Attorney Chuck Jasper, representing Commissioner Farabee. I have a question. When did he have an opportunity to respond to these charges?
Wouldn't they have read to him? And that's referenced in the motion.
It's news to me.
Okay, we'll proceed with the roll call vote.
Buskerud?
Yes.
Haddock?
Aye.
Troutman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion carried. Any other motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carrying.
See you tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.